Oh.
Operate this thing, I'm really ready to get lessons, so I quit asking for help.
Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Uh, that's a planning commission. I think it's a work study meeting, September ninth, twenty twenty five. And when you're ready to call order, I mean, when you're ready to call.
Oh, my god.
Commissioner Clark?
Here.
Commissioner Shapiro?
Here.
Commissioner Diamato?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hazel is not present. Commissioner Davis, not present. Vice Chair Riley?
Here.
And Chair Ockhart, not present. Vice Chair Riley, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
Okay. Apologies, I'd like to recognize, uh, ex officio, pastizo.
Hector, could you help Lisa with her laptop if she lost her agenda? Somehow? Okay. Uh, brief announcements by staff.
Thank you, Vice Chair Riley, and just for clarification, I've informally referred to this and probably on the agenda, the, the calendar called it a study session, and technically, this is just a special, a special meeting of the plan, of the planning commissions. I, uh, I looked at, we did our initial review of the community development director, city planner applicants, and we've got three good applicants, all with Oregon land use experience, either community development director type experience or working for DLCD. So I'm looking forward to interviewing those folks in the very near future. And, uh, there are a couple, a couple code enforcement things that I wanted to, that I didn't have immediate access for you, and just wanted to, I'll keep these on the agenda until we get some resolution, but the one question was about the timeline that squid auto had been provided. And, um, we provided them a notice on July thirty that did not have a due date, so I told our code compliance officer to provide them another notice, which actually the due date is today. I mean, we have seen that, so that is now the second notice, and so I'll be talking to the city attorney, we've got established sort of a new policy on, to make clear the steps that we go through, we're actually citing somebody. Um, that we'll be trying that. We'll try that out.
Right.
Uh, this is the squid auto, uh, on, off of Valley. Correct, they've, they've verbally said multiple, well, twice that they would come in and, and seek land use approval, but we have not seen them in, as far as I'm aware. And I haven't told, I haven't. So, uh, the next, so we are, code citation process, basically provides two warning notices, and so they've had those two warning notices. The third, uh, warning, essentially, the third warning notice would give them another ten days after which, if they still were not complying, we could cite them.
And that, what does that mean, cite them, that they have to move?
Uh, we could issue, uh, uh, essentially civil citation, um, that has a fine of, I don't remember this offense, whether it's two hundred and fifty or five hundred dollars a day.
Oh, a day, until they leave, or till they?
Basically, until the court hearing.
Oh, oh.
And in my experience, generally speaking, judges, you know, if you've got six thousand dollars added up day by day, by the time you get to a court hearing, it's typically um, the, the judge would award that single, like, the one day, they, they often discount significantly what that fine would be. But, so, we would be on the process to find them. Um, and, um, and if they still didn't comply after that court date, um, I think we could reasonably expect a judge, a future judge, if we have to cite them again, if you're still not complying, to hit them with a free significant.
So I, why can't we just evict them? Because we don't own the, oh, because we don't own the land? So we can't shut their business down for not having permits? We can only fine them?
So if they were, um, they had done anything out there that required a building permit, you, there is the ability to red tag, uh, a building that doesn't comply with a, a building permit, but since it's a land use issue, I don't believe we have any, I, I don't believe we have the authority to simply go out there and police, you know, lock their gate or something.
Okay, thank you.
Of course, um, and as far as the one oh five grab and go, um, trees, uh, Jason, I've got, gotta go back and find the action plans, um, so we're digging through the archonic to bring up the plan set, so I can at least figure out whether, what, what we approved. I did notice in, uh, land partition approval that we recently made, that there is a street tree provision in there that didn't mention, and those street trees must be approved, street trees, so. Uh, communicated with our, um, our planning folks that anytime we mention street trees, we should be including clear language that says, "street trees," and they must be from the approved street trees. Uh, those are my announcements.
Any other questions for Steph? Okay. So, uh, next we have approval of minutes from the August twenty sixth, twenty twenty five meeting, has anyone had any corrections or changes or comments? Do we have a motion for approval?
I, I will know, we'll make a clerical correction, there's something odd in this document, it has different footers on different pages, so the date is right on the first footer, but we will clerically correct the date on the other page groups.
Motion to approve the minutes with the correction of the date?
Second, please. A second. Uh, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, uh, we have no public comment that I know of, have you received anything? Mr. City recorded.
Apologies, Chair, the comments for the planning commission go to Hector Rocha and not my office, so I overlooked, uh, going over those with him. But as of my knowledge, as of right now, there are no comments to the commission.
Okay, so we can, uh, start with the discussion items of the evening, and the first is the review of the City of Talent Climate Friendly Area Study and CFEC, which has another name now, CFA, right?
Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities.
That's the, that's the new name.
So, CFEC is the, actually, the broader umbrella of which, uh, climate friendly areas are, are one of the ways that you have to comply with the, with the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities statutes. So, um, I might, um, you all have a pretty detailed, uh, study in your packet. Um, but, and, uh, the way I'm gonna propose that we work through this discussion is, I've, uh, I've laid out the requirements, and what I would propose is the way that we may meet those requirements, so I'll add this to the minute, so it goes in the public record. Um, and I think this may be, uh, a better way to proceed rather than just regurgitating the study.
As far as I know, Lisa and I are the only ones that attended the, the meeting, but you were uncancelled. So, you, yeah, I don't know which me, but I was at some meeting where they went over this. You went to the open house?
I don't remember. I just remember some. Could have been.
So, um, again, uh, the, uh, the broader category is climate friendly and equitable communities, and one of the, uh, oh, big chunk of how you comply with climate friendly and equitable communities is the establishment of a climate friendly area that meets the requirements. So, what I'm gonna, uh, walk through tonight, I don't expect to get through all of it, but I'll walk through what the CFA study requirements are, and then what the development code requirements of, um, and tho- those, um, those development code standards are both CFEC and CFA, they include both the CFA, all of the CFA requirements, including the CFA requirements. And then, if we have time and you all have appetite, we could dip into some of the comp plan, uh, changes that will be required to comply. So, um, there's, there are a number of requirements just related to the study of the area, and, and you have that, that study, that was what was included in the, in the packet. So, um, you have to, uh, have a public engagement plan that was, um, appended to that study. Um, you have to consider candidate zones, which that study did. Um, there are certain selection requirements, um, the primary ones being that, um, that you're working in existing or planned urban centers, and that's defined variously as downtowns, neighborhood centers, transit served corridors. And, uh, and there's high, high quality transit service, the highest quality, the highest quality transit service that's available is expected to be included. Um, there is, there are sort of two options about, uh, ways to go in, uh, selecting your area. You can either use the prescriptive approach, which is really what, um, what that study chose to use. Um, and drives you to the minimum of twenty-five acres and also the building height minimum of, of fifty feet. Or you can do a performance-based analysis, um, which is pretty involved, and what staff suggested in that report is they didn't think that that was um, an option for City of Talent, because, um, there's, there's, uh, I'm sorry, my, my field cut off a little language here. The, um, there's a requirement that employment areas, um, adjacent to or near to the, the climate friendly area meet a certain, um, job uh, density standard, and, uh, staff at that time determined that it is gonna be essentially impossible for, for City of Town to meet that standard, so we were left with the, um, prescriptive standard. You, you need to size correctly, and so for our population, uh, uh, the, the minimum would be twenty-five acres. There's a step to identify zoning issues, and I'll go through some of those findings in more detail in the next section. And you also need to conduct an anti-displacement strategy and study, and an equity study. So, um, all those things have been completed. There is certainly the possibility that, um, you know, that this isn't written in stone, um, that that's the area. Um, I should, you know, restate the area for, for, for the record, that's, that was sort of assumed in that study. And, um, and there was a resolution of, uh, of the city council in twenty-three that acknowledged the study, it did not, it certainly did not commit the city to that, uh, to that specific area, but the area proposed essentially includes the, um, most of the eastern portion of, uh, what is the central business district and the undeveloped, uh, essentially, well, largely undeveloped or entirely undeveloped area on the other side of Highway ninety-nine to the south of Valley, that sort of triangle there that, um, has a significant development opportunity, so that, that was where that study ended up, uh, proposing.
Alex?
Yeah.
Is there a map of that in, in the packet on, in this?
Yes, and I actually do have leftover from my last meeting.
Thank you.
A few.
Thank you. This is a triangle.
So, given the need to, you know, site in an existing or planned urban center and the middle of twenty-five acres, I don't believe there are a whole lot of options. Um, I think the, the decision to go across ninety-nine, um, made some sense there, um, that gets you to the, to the, um, to that twenty-five acres and still being able to exclude sort of the western portions of the central business district that are built out, you know, as this, as a lower density residential area that I think, um, you know, would, would make sense for the city to perhaps not include in the climate friendly area. But that's, that's the big picture, and as I understood it, what, how they got to that proposal.
Yes, it was Felicia said, "I'm here," I didn't, I forgot the name, so I didn't know that, that just came up. Oh, it's Felicia.
I guess that's. Yeah, hey, uh, apologies for that. For that, apologies for that little pop-up message, but I can't get rid of it, so I'll, I'll try to ignore. Um, so, uh, as I said, I think that's a basic overview of the logic that came to that, that, you know, that drove folks to come to select that area. Um, as I said, I, I think there is, there's certainly room to tweak it, um, if the planning commission and city council ultimately chose to do so.
Just, so it, did, did the plans, the requirements work with our plan for the gateway?
Yes.
Was one of the requirements a certain part of undeveloped land? Or is it?
I made that statement in our last meeting, and I was incorrect. So if we had gone the prescriptive route, that's where you really get into assessing the, the, the development potential. Um, but, uh, the, under the prescriptive option, that doesn't really come into it. Um, I should go and promote, uh, Commissioner Hazel, uh, to panel, so she can participate. Commissioner Hazel, I, I've, uh, I've made you a co-host, 'cause I didn't see another way to make you a, a panelist, but I, are, are you able to communicate to us?
Oh, funny, yeah, now I can unmute, I couldn't unmute before, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Hazel, if, if you want to see where we are, we're on, if you go to page twenty on the Climate Friendly Equitable Communities, part of the packet.
Thank you.
Sixteen, twenty, that's where the map that shows the area that's been chosen is. Okay.
Page twenty?
I think it's on page, actually, page sixteen.
Sixteen.
Seventeen, it's on page seventeen.
Okay, got it, thank you. And I apologize for being late, I completely forgot that we had changed the time.
Apologies for not having sent a reminder. Um, so, uh, just to restate the key, the key factors, Commissioner Hazel, that, um, drove that selection was that there's, uh, requirement that, uh, climate friendly area be in an urban center um, or in and around an urban center, um, and, um, have high quality transit service, and there's a minimum size of twenty-five acres for the population size that City of Town is. And as I read the explanation of the, the selection, I think the other factor, um, that drove them to include the area cross uh, South Pacific Highway was both the development potential there, and that allowed, that would allow the city to meet the minimum twenty-five acre requirement, but also exclude the more western portion of the central business district that is more residential, um, and. and may not be, you know, appropriate for being included in the climate friendly area. I should say medium to low density residential specifically.
Do you have any questions about that part, Commissioner Hazel?
Um, actually, yeah. I'm, I'm wondering if it still includes Old Town. I mean, the Old Town buildings or area of Old Town where, for the building height.
Yes, it does. It does include substantial portions of the, of the Old Town overlay.
So the study someone's done in 2023?
Correct.
So what happened, you could study after the fire?
Yes.
That had any impact on that since the downtown area was pretty much lost? I'm just curious that, because if it was before the fire, would they have chosen there?
Yeah, I don't know that they would have necessarily seen that the area on the other side of South Pacific Highway as a logical opportunity before the fire.
So if, if we're, since we used the not prescriptive part, the analysis, why couldn't it all be on the other side? On the east, northeast side of 99?
Uh, yeah. So I think, so neighborhood center is actually a land use classification that's used in some larger cities. So I think you'd probably have to go through a process. And I honestly, I'm not sure that that process is available to a city of our size to, to establish a neighborhood center. If you're going to sort of exclude all of downtown, I think you, you need a urban, a urban center to sort of cluster around.
Commissioner Shapiro?
But it doesn't seem like we want 50 bit minimum buildings in an Old Town historic district. And I don't know why we couldn't.
So just to be clear, it's 50 foot is the minimum maximum. So the, the maximum would be 50 feet. It wouldn't require that anybody build to 50 feet. It would just be, the, the city could not prohibit building to 50.
We couldn't prohibit it. And if someone wanted to come in our Old Town district.
They, they would still certainly be subject to the Old Town district historic overlay standards.
Which, which.
We were told the opposite, that this was, this would preempt any other overlays.
Well, so where they conflict, yes, that is correct. Where they conflict, that is correct. But the design review which doesn't conflict, so the design review would still.
I mean, that's really concerning to me that we have so much land that our.
When I first heard about this, I had the same reaction. Then one day when I, I was going through Ashland and the sun came out and hit Lithia Springs. And I thought, if they had had height restrictions, that building wouldn't have been built. And it, so, you know, if, it does, it does sound crazy when you think about somebody's house just sitting there and, you know, this giant.
They have such a bigger downtown area than.
I don't know how big it was when they built Lithia Springs, though. I mean, who knows? But, but then it's not, it's not that likely, I don't think. And also, we can change this. It hasn't been adopted, right? We can change this if our, if our UGB changes and our city limits change to the north, correct?
Um, well, so the, we, there is an expectation where the city has agreed to adopt a CFA climate friendly area by the end of this calendar year. I don't think it's likely that we'll be adding anything to the urban growth boundary prior to that. There, there is a requirement when you do add to the urban growth boundary to consider establishing, but I believe it's additional climate friendly areas. There's a certain quantity when you're adding a certain number of acres to the UGB that you consider adding another. But I don't think that it's likely that, that the, this CFA would be removed as a result of an urban growth boundary change.
So this has already been mandated. It's gone through all the.
Yeah. So the, the state, the state law that established it, I think goes back to the 21 legislature. 21, 2020?
She, she issued the, take, issued the executive order that created this a month, well, in February 2020, right before everything shut down.
Thank you.
So all the work that went into it would just happen underground kind of, that sort of hit, to a point to me.
And am I, am I misremembering that there also a lot of this is already brought to, that question it and will challenge it and it's.
It was challenged in court.
Right. And that it's all been, it is okay. And then this is, these are the rules.
Yeah, this is.
So that's already been challenged, it's already gone that far, which, you know, makes, there's not a lot, I feel like we don't have a lot of room for this. And I guess we, you know, I hope that people who do develop it will do a really nice design and make it look like a nice downtown. I mean, I'm not opposed to having several story buildings. If you do it nicely, it's, you know, it all blends together. That's the part, I don't know how much control we have of that. You know, we have a one-story building here, a three-story building here, a two-story building. I mean, it would look so awkward and odd.
Um, it's a, to, to that question about control. I should probably bring to you all for your awareness. There's a, there's DLCD based on another more recent law has established the, the requirement that cities make a number of adjustments to standards for residential development. So that, that is another limitation on exactly what the city can require. And, and those are, a lot of them are about the more aesthetic, non-clear and objective in DLCD speak standards. So I don't want to, certainly wouldn't want to give you the misimpression that there's, that, I mean, that the city is free to regulate, will be free to regulate development as long as it's 50 feet or, or less. There is, one thing that is clear is that there, the city's ability to require some commercial on the down floor, on the first floor is allowed under both climate friendly areas and those adjustments.
So then my question would be, knowing all of that that's been done, what, as we look at this, what, what input do we really have? Where, where, where should we focus that discussion? I mean, if there are things that are off the table, because it's sort of been determined, where do we, what, what is it, what's, what's our goal?
Yes, so the, one, just the way city code is written, the, the process has to run through the planning commission. Sort of regardless of your position, I think. So certainly there is a role in advising city council. In terms of where the flexibility may be to adjust what's proposed. I would assume that you all are not interested in pushing this area eastward. I think there may be an opportunity to include some more area that is on the east side of South Pacific Highway, north of Valley View in order to reduce, to take more of the central business district out. I, I think it would be, it would be hard to justify taking all of the central business district out to meet the, the prescriptive standard. But to the extent that there is flexibility, I think that might be the area.
I'm curious, how exactly would the historical designers be applied if somebody wanted to build a 50-story structure? Would it influence how it looked even though it wasn't that big?
So, thank you, Council of Prestige. So, so, yes, I, I, there are, where, where the climate friendly area requirements conflict with the, with the downtown overlay, the climate friendly area rules would take precedence. But as we'll go through, there really aren't that many that are, other than density standards and this height question. So, yes, there, there are significant elements of design review that would still be applied. Although, I think useful exercise would be to look at those adjustments that I mentioned and see which of them would survive those adjustments if it's a residential project. We have to make those adjustments.
No, I, I really, it just, it looks smaller to me when I first saw it. I think maybe I was having an emotional reaction the first time I ever looked at this. But most of it is the vacant land that is close to the highway and, and our downtown core, you know, where our older homes and older buildings are, aren't in there. So.
Commissioner. Pretty much, that area is pretty much developed with commercial, right? I mean, I'm trying to think, I should go down Talin Ave. Uh, maybe some residential to your left, if you're going north. But on your right, you've got businesses, you've got the pharmacy, you've got the former clinic that the.
There are a couple houses right there beside the pharmacy where Chrissy lived.
Are they, they're in that zone? Yeah, okay.
I, I wonder if solar, if our solar access rules, would, would they still be affected, effective?
Um, I can look at that. And to Commissioner Clark, your point about what's, what's actually there in that portion of downtown? The, I think the other factor when, when we're considering the possibility of 50, 50-foot building is from an economic standpoint, you, you need a reasonably large parcel to feasibly and economically build a tall building. So there, you know, I think that there, there probably is an opportunity, one or two opportunities to assemble that kind of parcel. But there aren't lots.
How many, is that five, what's 50 feet? How many stories is that?
Four stories.
Four stories?
Most likely, yeah.
You know, is this, there any chance this will influence the innovation district to move somewhere? There, it's still not going to leave. There's going to be no trouble there.
Yeah, I, I don't think this would create any additional pressure on, on RVTIT, I mean, sorry, TIT.
So let's go, let's look at the code standards.
Okay, great. So on page two, I started with development code standard. So the, the first, the first set is that a number of uses must be allowed outright is the language. The 99 revisioning study encouraged and suggested that essentially all of these uses should be made type one rather than type two. And I think some of them may even be type three in the, in the central business district. I think you're certainly right that, that type three review of any of these uses is probably not, would not be allowed within the CFA overlay. I don't think that there's a good argument that a type two review is not an outright allowed use. I think there are potentially other arguments to be made that they should be, that some of these should be type one. And I think there was some input in the corridor study that led them to that, to that suggestion. But I don't think there's a clear requirement to comply with CFA that all of these uses need to be a type one. As far as the, shall I move, shall I move on and run?
Sure.
The next set has to do with block length. And so we're close to the standard. I'm not sure why, I've got a question into Chris, why he used 400 feet rather than this 350-foot maximum? We, we actually changed this in what you all, what the city council recently approved. So I need to figure that out. But we, we're pretty close. And I do want to note. 350 is, is the requirement. And we went to four, we added 400. But, so I think he may have been looking at a different, a different requirement or even may have been motivated by a different compliance here. But anyway, there, there is a fix that we need to make. I don't think it's terribly significant. One thing that did occur to me that, to check out is, is this going to make development of that triangle on the other side of South Pacific Highway really, really difficult? There, there are, there are, there are processes for providing exemptions if the city wanted to with, you know, pedestrian access and, and other requirements. If the, if we concluded it wasn't feasible to sort of put, put a roadway between, between 99 and West Valley View because of ODOT's objections or any, any other number of reasons. Yeah.
To me, it seems counterintuitive that the smaller acres have a, you know, the larger acres have a shorter ZOT requirement than the smaller acres.
Yeah, I, I wondered about that too. I, I, I think, I think the assumption is that the smaller parcels, it's easier to achieve because you have more natural breaks. But with a large, so if you're dealing with one very large parcel, you wouldn't necessarily want to require two roadways through it. So it's, it's making an allowance for the, sort of the different kind of development style that, that happens with larger parcels that, that. And with smaller parcels, you have more opportunities at lot lines to, to push the right of way through with less impact on the development potential. I, I think that's the logic. It caught me by surprise too. And I, I thought at first it was a typo. I went, went and made sure that, that I had it right. So on the, on the residential density standards, there, there can be no maximum residential density. And the, this talent municipal code doesn't have a density maximum per se. But the, the DOT 070 sections in both CBD and commercial business, central business highway have a calculation of the maximum number of units in relationship to the lot size. That is, I think, certainly arguably a maximum density. I need to, I need to confirm that with, with DLCT. But I'm pretty sure, even though that wasn't. even though that wasn't caught in the corridor study, that that is likely something that we should remove. And sorry, I should have started with, my working assumption is that we're doing this with an overlay, that we're not changing everything in CBD as opposed to the ninety-nine corridor style. I should have made that clear to start with. And then, density minimums. We, we don't have density minimums currently. The ninety-nine corridor revision, so you did proposed language, how to do that. There are some exemptions for mixed-use and renovations, but there, there is a, a density minimum for residential development. And then you have the minimum, maximum height. So, I think the, these are probably the three substantively, you know, most significant pieces of, of compliance from a code standpoint. Maybe I should stop there and see if there are anything I can clarify.
I have a question about when you talk about it being an overlay. The other option would be for it to be its own zone, right? From it, from a review and user from a leak point of view, I wonder if it would be easier to have it as a zone?
Thank you, Vice Chair Riley. I, I had a very similar thought and, and actually I had some conversation with DLCT staff about exactly this question. The, what they suggested is that we've actually, our code already has overlays in a couple different places. And that one approach might be to really clean up the way that we handle overlays, put them all in one place and make sure that the overlays are all appropriately referenced in the underlying zones. That would achieve a lot of what you're talking about. But I, I do agree with you, sir, from first principles, it, it probably would be clearer to actually create a new, a new zone.
So, there's only two zones in the, in this overlay, right?
It, 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 as proposed, yeah, in the area that was proposed in the study, correct. It only touched two zone, two zone types. So, these, these other requirements, there's, could be, can be either, well, the compliance is pretty straightforward. So, there's a transportation review process, essentially that we can meet at our size. All we have to do is adopt the multimodal gaps analysis, which is really a study document, but it would become an exhibit to the comp plan. And that was completed, I think, around the same time as this, well, it was completed in two thousand twenty-four. I'll certainly include it in a packet in the near future, but it really does, it's no, it's, it's not a policy change. It's just an acknowledgement of the multimodal gaps.
It's adopted into the comp plan already?
It would, it would need to do. It is not, it has not. No, it, it, well, sorry, yes, the study has been done, but it has not been adopted. And I was actually thinking about suggesting we adopt it with the buildable land inventory, but I realized that might be sort of putting the cart before the horse if you all hadn't settled on the climate-friendly area itself yet. Or the council hadn't settled on that. There are some land use requirements that, that don't need to be complied with until the next transportation system plan. And there are parking and bicycle requirements, which we have some proposed code language for, from the ninety-nine corridor revisioning study that I'm proposing that we go into some detail at the next, next planning commission. So, that's, that's the total of what, what the CFA implies. It's really that the dense, the density pieces are, are, I think where the rubber, the density, including the maximum height are, are where the rubber really hits the road.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, going to hit that L S P.
So, I just wanna go back to the no-mac residential density. I understand, that means I could build as much as I want in, on that land, whatever you can possibly, they have?
Essentially, yes. So, the, the, and the, the state has also passed some law, a law that I'll be bringing before you sometime in the next six months or so that says that the, the cities can't prohibit, I'm gonna forget the term of art, but essentially group, group houses, sort of dormitory-style housing, where you have shared kitchens and you have very small individual living areas. So, yes, the, the state, the, it is, you could see development, you know, three, four-story with a pretty significant number of individual residential units. And the city would not have a zoning basis to disallow those.
Was that something that passed in the last session?
Not this most recent session, but the session before, yeah.
Was that Senate eight? That Senate eight was about?
I wish, I, I don't have it in front of me. I, I can share, I'll certainly bring that back next time. I have, I have at least the term here.
I'd say the visions of what that can look like. So, it's a, it's a hard life, do not have any, you know, I mean, I believe in you know, having several, as many as you can, you have no map to use. And have a building like that and not that it would be necessary, I mean, a minister, if it was low income, we have more people, we would take care of some of the housing problems. You know, it all depends on, you know, commitment and.
Yeah, well, and just to reply to your request, Vice Chair Riley, the, RV COG actually did sort of a preliminary audit of all the cities for these middle housing requirements. And so, I, I can share, I'll share with you all in the next packet what their findings were. And, and there is, there's, there's some like emergency shelter siting requirements. And I don't remember what the three are, but anyway, I'll, I'll, I'll provide those to you.
I, you know, if you wanted to send them out even before next packet, I would be interested in seeing it.
Sure, yeah, I can, I can, I can send a number of things that we've, that we've talked about.
Do you know what they call that kind of dorm-style project? Is there?
I, I would, I think, come up with it fairly quickly, so, but don't want me to stop you from.
So, how much of this land is available that's not already developed at the twenty?
We have the word boarding house in our codes and lights, too. That was, yeah, flashing back to the conversation about short-term, about five years ago, something, something about boarding house.
Rooming houses, boarding houses, we talked a lot about it.
Yeah.
This sounds, this is like co-op housing.
Yeah.
I read, I read not long ago there about it, I think it was in Portland, it might have been a larger city, but you went like, it really is like a dorm where you have a team.
Portland, I do, I do live in Portland, do that.
Yeah, wonder how it's doing.
I know, I wonder.
Uh, s- single-room occupancy, SRO. So, the, uh, single-room occupancy or SRO is, is the, the term that the statute is. It's, it's a code compliance issue. It's not, it's not legal. We've been, we've been trying to see if perhaps that, that's exactly what it is. I mean, functionally, that, that single-family home has been turned into that. But we have been struggling to see how we get in there to literally know that and prove that.
We have to, they have to have a, like a license, right?
A, a, yeah, a, a city business license, they do.
Living there.
One of, one of the residences well-known in our neighborhoods for just walking around asking people for money.
Really?
Everyone should be aware of that.
It's a top secret.
Yeah.
She doesn't want you renting rooms. Oh, really?
Now's a good time to go check it out, but I started.
So, is it a nuisance?
Um, I, you know, neighbors who were in, in view of it, complained a lot.
Yeah.
Well, one was generated by one of the, one of the residents and how they were being treated by the landlord. So, it wasn't really, we didn't really have any standing to address. It's, I think, six or seven, maybe.
Oh, my gosh, Chris.
There's a lot of speculation.
Yes.
If you all have the appetite, I could, I'd be interested in sharing, previewing some of the comp plan changes. Yeah, so the first page is the entirety of the comp, right, right, the?
Yeah, I'm trying to clarify, but in this climate-friendly area where we have these, whatever we call them, but still no off-street parking required. So, we could end up with lots and lots of people with their cars wondering where they're gonna find.
Indeed.
It just seems so messed up.
It's, it's kind of right. I, I mean, I think they're, they're, one, one thing to consider, I, I think, in, in terms of what, if you play out a scenario, the worst-case scenario, the reality is talent's probably not going to be the bleeding edge of most extreme development scenarios. There will be reactions and public policy changes if that starts happening. So, I think that you can play out a pretty extreme scenario in all of downtown.
The reality.
Five stories, but, but before you would get there, there would be changes.
The reality of that happening.
Commissioner Acele, do you wanna say anything?
Yeah, and I, and I can't raise my hand, just so you know. So, I, I'm very disturbed by having an o, an overlay over Old Town because, for one thing, I was reading, one of the lines said that it doesn't include any older structures, or not many. And I, I don't know that that's necessarily true, but after the fire, we lost so much. And we've seen already what's happened with buildings going up in, in single-family neighborhoods, you know, multi-story structures. And I, I, I don't think that it's gonna take that long for builders to take advantage of the fact that they can build higher and get more apartments or whatever. I think, I, I think that's, that's what I would see happening to our downtown area. And I think it would be sad to say that you could build something that high in, in a lot just because there's no structure there now because it burned down. So, that's my concern. I think we're, we're gonna completely change the nature of the downtown. It won't be quaint anymore. It's, it's, you know, not that there are that many older homes there, but it's one of the things that makes talent appealing is it feels smaller. And I don't know why we would want to change the feeling of that downtown area when we have so much surrounding land and the urban growth boundary, but also just on the other side of ninety-nine that could be developed at higher. So, that, that's my feeling about it. And I'm, I'm just not, I, I mean, if you could see, we already had the neighbors down off of Arnes complaining about the three-story house or apartments that went up, and the, what was it, eleven apartments or something? And then those big, ugly structures that are on, what's the next one over? The one that turns into a rap road. There, it's like, I just, that's what I see happening in downtown. So, I just, I'm really worried about it.
Commissioner, if I, I may address a couple of your points. One, one is, I, I think, I think the study is right in terms of the number of historic structures. The, the density of historic structures is a lot higher in the portion of downtown that's not in the CFA than is. And I think one of the things I should bring back to you all is a map specifically of that, of the, the national register structures and what's, what's in and what's out. The other thing that I, I would mention in, in, in relation to, to your statements is I, we haven't seen a, there's residential, well, mixed-use development in downtown up to three stories is allowed by, and I honestly don't remember off the top of my head exactly what the threshold for conditional use is in terms of height, but with conditional use or without, you, you can develop in downtown three, three stories, I believe, currently. We're not, we haven't seen a tremendous amount of, of development interest for that. The change of being able to do four stories instead of three, I think, is unlikely to be sort of like a black and white flip-the-switch change to the economics of that development.
I think to that point, what you said earlier about needing it, they're reasonable-sized parcel. If I remember right, once you go to four stories, you require that. Those are really expensive. They're not gonna do it for a small, tall building. It's gonna have to be, you know, a pretty good size to make it worth the investment, I think. Well, at least once you get over three stories.
Thank you, sure. So, on the, on the comp plan recommendations, or, or, sorry, requirements for CFAC. The first is simply that you prioritize the loc, the locating of government facilities, particularly those that provide services to the public, and also parks and open space in or near climate-friendly areas. So, I think those are reasonably innocuous statements, although I would, I think it is an important caveat that the parks and open space does have the caveat without sufficient access to these amenities. I don't think our comp plan would wanna say, you know, we're, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do parks and open space in areas that aren't near the CFA. But, um, I think there's some fairly straightforward language, which I propose. You know, examples of here that would meet that, that requirement. The only other requirement is that, um, that you're requiring, um, street trees and landscaping. Um, and the city's, um, comp plan clearly already does that with the, with the street cross-sections, um, that are in there. So that's the entirety of the comp plan changes, with the exception of, I probably should have also listed on this page again, the, the, the adoption of the multimodal gap analysis, but that is simply an analysis, not policy.
And we're gonna see that in the next path tip?
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, I don't think we do, but I'm just curious that we encourage. So we're talking like this, yeah.
Then this building and the historic uptown hall, which is gonna, when we get done with that, it's gonna be a really great town center.
It is.
Yeah, it is. And the library. And, uh, and over here, uh, what's in the old urban renewal building?
Um, the rogue, well, uh, Rogue Action has vacated and, um, uh, I, I've had some discussions with this startup nonprofit Rogue Seniors about their potential interest in that building. I mean, and you mentioned the library. The library is another good example of, of that type.
And also, well, it's not city government, but Maker City seems like the other service. There's, and there's two places to drink.
Wait, wait, let's plan the city.
Three.
Cover the other place by, by the farmer's, you know, it's gonna be, who thinks it's gonna be, um, right?
Oh, that's right.
Right? That's what I would, I would think more, for me, service it like they have like a food stand office or a.
Yeah.
Yes.
The post office.
Yeah, the post office is true. If, uh, if I might, I'll, I'll, uh, maybe stay at a higher level, but walk through the comp plan, um, changes suggested by the corridor revision, uh, or revisioning. So the first set had to do with, um, uh, active, active uses, so non-auto oriented development. And so this first bullet here in the proposal is related to, um, there, there's the suggestion there to do type-one reviews on, um, those types of uses. And, uh, there's, um, think, so, um, well, I think it certainly makes sense. This, um, the proposed checks text here with objective seven point five, um, I think really does well, parallel the development standards for Highway ninety-nine that you all recommended to council and that council adopted. So I think that's, that's pretty clear that, um, we, the, we, as a city, we would want to do that because that'd be consistent with what the zoning code now says for, for the Highway ninety-nine corridor. And so, um, the next recommendation was along similar lines, uh, uh, calling for infill and redevelopment on the ninety-nine corridor. I, I think, uh, so I, I added, um, an element to, um, how, the housing, uh, plan, uh, suggesting that the city support residential development, um, in the ninety-nine corridor. And, and, um, it is notable and interesting to me that the, um, the consultant, um, you know, I think pushed in some areas. He did, um, I might say pull his punch, um, in some ways on, on housing and did not, uh, go all the way to proposing the possibility of purely residential development in the ninety, in the ninety-nine corridor. That was actually in the study by suggestion to do that, but that he did not put that forward in the code recommendations that he brought to us. Um, I still think in the medium term, perhaps with the support of the, if we get, um, you know, a- as we do a bigger look at the code next year, I still think that that's a worthy discussion, wh- whether we really should be concerned about, um, preventing that kind of development, um, particularly if the city were to adopt standards that say your first floor or some portion of your first floor must be built to make it feasible to convert to commercial in the future. Anyway, I, uh, that's, um, this, this comp plan language hints in that direction, but doesn't say we're going fully in that direction. And, um, so there's, there's, um, the number C here is, uh, about, uh, attracting more visitation, um, to, uh, key nodes in the downtown. Um, and so I thought that was a logical place to, you know, talk about, uh, the gateway, uh, as one of those nodes, um, as the entrance to downtown, um, and also, you know, the continued development of civic spaces and, um, and, you know, active things that attract and provide recreation, both for residents and, uh, visitors to, to downtown. And then, um, this D, um, is sort of just a my, a slight cleanup that reflects, um, uh, assuming, well, uh, matches a, uh, a CFA adoption. There, I also, um, responded to his suggestion at the top of, I should have numbered these pages, sorry. At the top of page seven, Housing Element Implementation Strategy three point three C. Um, and so this is where I said, I said specifically, um, if you, you would want to, uh, the city should consider, um, allowing residential where it's convertible, um, to commercial. The last couple of recommendations were, um, sorry, E was really about the, um, very parallel to the, to the, the Highway ninety-nine corridor development standards that you all adopted in, in zone, in zoning. So that's, that was already addressed above. And then, um, there's, uh, the corridor plan recommendations related to block distance and connectivity. Um, and so, um, that was, that was pretty easy to, uh, match the, uh, requirements. Um, so anyway, that's, that's an overview of both what's required for in CFAC and also what was suggested, um, in the corridor revisions. I think returning to the CFA area, if I'm, might, well, I should stop and see if there's interesting discussion discussing, so. I know it's a lot. I, I sort of queued, included this thinking if we had time, it might be good to preview it with you all. But I didn't expect it, you all would have.
E is, is come, is combining and making the same, the city center and downtown corridor design standards.
Um, so, yes, it's, it's saying that the, the corridor as a whole should have similar design standards to downtown. Or maybe not similar, but design standards with the same motivations as the design standards for downtown. I, encouraging non-auto develop, non-auto oriented development and making it a, you know, a pleasant place to be for folks who aren't in their cars.
But most of our downtown is our historic overlay, so. I don't know how, but, yeah.
I, I, the way I read, um, you talked about E specifically.
Yes.
The, the way I read it was that, um, the, I think the vast majority of those standards, um, and expectations already exist for downtown in the comp plan. And what was missing is applying a similar set or lens to the, to the corridor as a whole. If we could loo- loop back to the, to the, uh, climate-friendly area, I think, I think what I should do, I, I will certainly send a number of documents out to you, uh, as Vice Chair Riley suggested. But the next time that we get together, I think it would be helpful to provide you all a map of an overlay with the historic structures, a more detailed map.
That would be helpful.
Um, and.
Well, we have those in our book.
Yeah, yeah, but like, we, I could put the overlay on it, so it makes very clear where that is relative to those structures. Um, maybe also highlighting the size and what, uh, parcels are significant development opportunities. Serve as, as that area exists now.
Yep.
And, um, I, that, uh, have an answer to the question about solar access as well. Um, and I think, I hope that we might be, we, we have a little bit of wiggle room. So that overlay zone, that the, the CFA zone as proposed in that study, I think, was twenty-eight point something acres, if memory serves me. So I think there is the opportunity to surgically maybe take out, uh, a few parcels. If we identify, you know, there's some historic buildings or a block or two that we, that we really don't think belongs. But, um, um, seems to me that, that it, on the whole, the proposal is certainly consistent with the spirit of what the state is asking for a climate-friendly area. And, um, I see it as extremely challenging to sort of redo that study completely. To, uh, head in a completely different direction in the timeframe we've got. And given that, uh, in twenty-twenty-three, when it was presented to city leadership, that clear instruction wasn't, you know, there wasn't a clear instruction to do that at that time. Um, I'm hopeful that that's not where you all end up, but maybe we'll, we will see. But I'll, I'll, um, what I'll present to you is, is what I think there, where, where there are opportunities to tweaks, tweak what is here.
And are we, at the next meeting, are we gonna be going, working on this further?
In the next meeting, by our next. The planning commissioner, the next study.
The, the next.
Yes. So, um, I, we, we are perfectly transitioning to discussion item B here, so.
I was, I was wondering if we could, the weather's good, but we could have a pre-meeting walkabout of this area, the downtown part of it.
I thought of that too, Joy. That would be helpful. And I don't want to give them any extra land that we don't have to. There's a few acres that we don't, that we could take back and, what?
I, uh, I think that's a great idea and if, um, I'll, I'll suggest a voluntary time period and where we might meet.
Yeah.
Particularly looking at those historic structures that are within the, those blocks.
Do you know why there's a notch on the, on that part that is the TID land that's on Talent Avenue? Why, why that was notched out?
Did not see a discussion of that in the study, but I may have missed it. Uh, but I don't think it's TID. I think that's.
That's, well, the buildings that are out of it, isn't that where Maker City and the, um, that other, that's at a store building there that was just.
Oh, yeah.
The mall, the garage.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what's left there. That's, yeah, that's.
I think there was an attempt to leave them out.
And that, that may be an opportunity to put those in, given that they are redeveloped at this point, which might give us a little bit more flexibility to take, uh, uh, some other blocks out.
Right. And I would like, like, including that, like, things that are already developed that they can't develop.
But they're, but they already took the criteria.
Yeah.
Cause we're not, we're not trying.
But I mean, if we.
We're, we're trying to do what we're supposed to do.
Really?
Yeah. But, I know, cause they're, they're service, both of them are service.
Right. But I mean, if it's included in the CFA area where it's not now, right? So that would give us more land. It maybe we could take away some other land and then the three, whatever the three extra acres are, see where most we could take it away and then maybe move some somewhere else to get out of the historic overlay would really make me happy, but.
And, and given that it's not residential development.
Yeah.
It, it's certainly not inconsistent with the CFA requirements.
Right.
So.
So I think we should do what's best for us and if that is best for us, I would like to see some kind of options there as well.
Yeah. Um, so, uh, September twenty-third would be the regular meeting. So yes, I've got sort of two things, uh, lined up for that. One would be, you know, continuing this discussion about how we, how we comply with the CFA, exactly what the overlay area should be and make sure that I'm on the right, uh, track with the, with the development code language.
Could we, like Joy was suggesting to, like, could we meet at, if anybody who wanted to meet at six to do like a walkabout? Right. But I mean, we can maybe meet a half an hour early for people that wanted to do that, is what I'm saying, not, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. How about, uh, how about five thirty?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then, um.
I, uh, don't plan to be present in front of September forty-third.
And, and that's certainly an optional activity where.
Right.
Where there will be no deliberation.
Yeah, right. So we could just make it great and then you could, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so the two things that I propose to focus on, on the twenty-third would be the continuation of this discussion and the review of the proposed parking compliance amendments. Setting up on the fourteenth of October, a public hearing where we would adopt the, the buildable land inventory and adopt those parking code requirements. And then we could, you know, and so none of, none of this, uh, CFA adoption am I proposing until eighteenth of November. So we've got at least several more meetings to hash this.
What, in the fourteen, in that five thirty or six thirty, was it public then? I know you sent it out, but I don't.
I, y- thank you. I did set it for five thirty.
On the fourteen?
On the fourteen, yes.
And then the twenty-third might be five thirty as well.
Right. Sounds like the, the twenty-third, I'll set up an optional.
Right.
Uh, walking.
Right.
Uh, tour for five, for five thirty. And then I think probably it would make sense for a regular start time of six thirty. Um, I, I've been sort of roughly thinking about these special sessions, the non-regular sessions, as doing those five thirty and then keeping the regular session at six thirty for some continuity.
Yep. Yeah, sounds good.
Do we have any propositions or remarks from the commissioners? Commissioner Hazel, I used to
Yeah, I, I'm just circling back around to the, the climate friendly area and the only, um, just thinking about what Alex had said about you know, how we've had the three-story um the, the um height allowance and people haven't been building there, but in the Old Town District, we've had more restrictions and it's much harder, it's been much harder for people to build there. And with this overlay, it would take away any of those restrictions that we had because the whole focus of this is intended to allow for more growth. So I just think that's something to consider. I don't feel like I'm, I'm you know, afraid of nothing. I think, you know, that was the same thing with the houses that were put in after the fire because the building codes were different at the time that the original houses were there and then when, you know, they burned down, the builders were able to build taller structures than they had before and um we couldn't deny them. So it I, I think it's important to keep that in mind. It's, they will come and it will change the nature of it. So if we can change any of that in the downtown area, um, I would really be I, I would support that. I'd like to see our town, at least the downtown area, stay as as small as it is and let the growth happen around it, so.
Like, how far away do you want the growth?
No, no, I mean, even just across the highway. I mean, it's, across the highway is a block away from downtown, so you know, to it, it makes it sound like it's so far away, but you don't have to be clustered right there around the downtown area to be livable and walkable, you know, if we just make it more uh safer to cross the highway, maybe, you know. Um, but it, it doesn't have to be, all be within a two-block area. And so I just don't see the need to include our old, a lot of that old town area that is included right now.
Hopefully we'll figure out a way to avoid that.
Commissioner, if I, I could just address, just to clarify, so you, you're while we've talked about and it's true that the climate friendly area requirements would rule where they conflict with the historic downtown overlay, we've gone through the entirety of what those requirements are and there, there, it, there's no requirement that the design standards of the historic overlay not apply. That it, that's not an effect of this. So the um, you're saying that they're all gonna go away. They will, they will not all go away simply because it is a climate friendly.
And I'm just wondering if, is it part of the reason that it's where it is because it needs to be along a major transportation route, just the bus route, with no telling that, and that's part of the reason you can't just move it away from telling them?
Um Yes, uh, the, the, the access to, to transit is a big part of why uh it's, it's here. Um, I honestly, I, I had in the back of my mind that the bus route was ninety nine in this area, but um, your point that it's, that it's talent, I think is, is a good
But at the same time, the bus route changes.
Yeah.
And they have changed it and they have taken it off Talent Avenue and they have, they cut, it doesn't come down as far south as we are, we're so
Yeah, it can't change.
It has to be accessible, right? It doesn't have to be on it, is that right?
Sir, served by is the standard, so I think
And I don't know why it couldn't change as well, like you said, if there was more people that needed access to it off of Talent Avenue if things changed and were developed, like, maybe the bus route could be moved accordingly, so, or added.
But you, you're, you're saying, Dave, sorry, Mr. Patisto, that you were saying that you thought there was a, an, a distance requirement?
I might be thinking of something else, but I know some
The, the, the parking, uh, parking requirement has a very, it's within a half mile of, of transit is that that we can't require residential parking. So I think that may be what, what you're thinking.
We can't say, I, I
Sorry, yeah, I didn't say that very clearly. So the Development Code Amendments on Parking that we'll be looking at next week. Um, and this is actually part of the larger CFEC requirements, not the CFA specifically. So the larger CFEC requirement um essentially prohibits parking requirements for residential development within a half mile of high-capacity transit.
Wow.
Which is essentially the wholesome.
Well, it's, it's high for
It's, it's the highest in the road valley.
I do, and it's been cut so much.
Yeah.
That's the other thing too, I mean, no more Saturday.
Right.
Pick away five routes.
Yeah.
But I don't think any of that matters, I guess this is the rule, whether it was once a day or ten times a day.
Uh huh.
Yeah, and the other, as far as legal, I'm not entirely sure how they view it, but I think you know, whenever you move a bus line, you're enfranchising some people and you're disenfranchising others. That we like finding out now bus lines that just canceled.
Yeah. It's crazy.
And so to move it, you know, there's gonna be a discussion, you know, about the pros and cons of moving it.
Or adding it, if they put naturally. Yeah, I know, right, at this point, I
But it is kind of a hatred because, you know, we're making plans at a local and state level and a lot of their funding is coming from the federal level. You know, it's tricky business.
Now, maybe in four years. Midterms are coming, so that was within a half mile of transit.
I would bet ninety cents, I, I, that, that's my recollection and, but that's uh one of the main focuses for our next discussion, so we will be
Face it.
Um, it, the, the, there, yeah, you cannot require parking for residential within a half mile
That is crazy.
Trains.
We'd have to do it.
Um, that way you can put more residential, if you don't, you're not using it the way it's for parking.
Yeah, well, that's great if people really didn't have drive cars or
Well, in the same, those with the, if we got better transportation, it'll might be less
Yeah, now we're
Might be interested in getting where their cars
Yeah, I wonder that, I mean, honestly.
That's the part where it's like, it's not an area where
You don't have like, you know, the, like Portland has.
No, when I lived in the Bronx, having a power of liability.
Yeah, right, I guess that, living in New York City, you know, you don't want to own a car, but we're in
Car one spot, you can do it for a week, you can't have to change that.
Yeah.
I mean, I just, you know, ridiculous have a car in those kind of places.
Yeah.
Here.
Chase every day.
Yeah.
And I
It's just, it's just One shoe does not fit all in this scenario, but
The, the other factor is, is um, I, I think it's unlikely well, there are some types of housing development that may, that may be built without parking. Um, and those are prob, the folks who would be interested in living those are probably less likely to have cars, as we've been talking about sort of SRO type housing, I think. Because in this context, housing without parking is, I think, probably a challenge to market, a challenge to sell. So there, there's, there's, just because you're not requiring it, doesn't mean that developers aren't gonna provide it because folks are gonna expect it when, particularly if they're buying a, 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 you know, mid-market or a home.
There's another consideration, I think, if we really want to encourage, you know, alternate forms of transportation, you know, with walking and the next type of the women's bike fights and bikes are very, very easily often stolen. And so I think if we're gonna have, I keep bringing this up for the gateway project is if we're gonna really encourage and expect people to be cycling, especially with these electric bikes that are heavy. You can't really expect them to be light enough to be bike stairs. And you have to provide some to replace, rather than park them and maybe even charge. And I think that's something we should just keep in mind for all this stuff.
Thanks, Councilor.
Yeah, I think we need to have uh charging not the best chargers, but a place to plug the charger in for all our companies.
Yeah, well, for bikes, you don't need a supercharger, just what a one ten will do. But
Well, that's all
Maybe it's making it secure, you know, because the chain doesn't know how to save your bike.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, that brings up a good point. I, I should have been clearer that it prohibits a requirement for auto, off-street auto parking within a half mile of transit. It certainly does not prohibit, I think, actually includes some requirement for bike parking. Um, and so that, that, well, the opportunity to discuss what those standards should be.
That's definitely, we're done.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good job.
Because um, just bringing up the gateway project, I was, we have a little update on that, cause I haven't heard one in over on the, for the gateway project.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and so just to be clear, did we adjourn or not?
We are not adjourned.
Okay, good. Um, so the um city council saw a draft, a pretty advanced draft of a request for qualifications at their last meeting. Um, and I'm expecting um to see, for them to see some final tweaks to that and approve it to be released at their next meeting next week. Um, so it's a request for qualifications rather than a request for proposal because the um, this time we're going out with much more of an open view rather than a specific master plan and saying, we want you to build this. Uh, council is more laying out, these are the types of things we would really like to see in this development and please come and tell us what your, your qualifications are to build this kind of development and what kind of vision you would propose. And then we would enter a negotiation with a, a selected um developer, so um should be, it should be on, on the street, as they say, by the end of the month and, and discussion later this fall on the selection.
Qualifications that are mixed housing with business with
Yes, so yes, the ca- council's very clear that they want to see um some commercial development on that site, that it be mixed. Um, in terms of housing, the um, there's a strong preference, though, there, there's a require, uh, I, I think I think it's fair to say there's a requirement that it be mixed use in the sense that there's some commercial. Um, and uh, there's a, a strong preference that there be um housing that's affordable to sort of middle income, the eighty to one twenty AMI. And there's also an encouragement that there be a mix of housing types, perhaps a mix of rental and ownership, perhaps a mixture of sort of townhouse and apartment. But um, anyway, those, those are some of the
With secure bike parking.
Okay, now we're adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.